Okay, good morning, everyone. I appreciate everybody's attendance, the public and staff, and presenters here for today's agenda. We're gonna get started here, and typically, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer. We have, for the pledge, we have Mr. Barry Williams, and for the prayer, Mr. Farron Crosby. Okay? Thank you.
Good morning, beautiful morning, here in our God's country, and from all of you standing, ready pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and dear Father in heaven, we're be grateful for many blessings this day. We're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet as a political body for Apache County, and as representatives of the citizens of this county. Would ask that thou would bless us with thy inspiration and spirit to help us in our decisions, to be wise and prudent, and to represent the people that live here in the best manner that we can. Would ask that thou would watch over our troops throughout the world, protecting freedom. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate again everybody being here. Just a quick announcement before we get into the formalities of the meeting. Mr. Shirley was unable to join us because of a flight, so he was unable to call in either. So you have Supervisor Shepard and myself today to go through the agenda, and there are a few agenda changes that we'll get to as we get to each item. So first off is the Apache County Library District. I'd like to open up that meeting.
Supervisor Shepard and Supervisor Shamley.
Hello.
The first item, I request that we remove that.
Okay.
Need a motion to delete?
No, there's no motion. You should just remove it.
Okay.
All right, second, a discussion and possible approval of the strategic plan for the Alpine Public Library.
Item number two, right here, I need a motion, so is it discussion approval? Yeah. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. Thank you. I'll second. Is there any questions or discussion?
Just thank you for the report that's been provided.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And it's in the backup material for the public, so that you know that. Okay, well, I have a motion and a second for the item, which is the, let me see where we at, discussion and impossible approval of the strategic plan for Alpine Public Library. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to commend Sue Ann on the activity you had last night, I believe, in Round Valley. Could you explain a little bit what you did there?
This week is Preservation Week throughout the nation, and as a library, we're, one of our duties, I guess you could say, is to preserve items in our libraries, but also, with Preservation Week, we're trying to preserve stories and photos and so forth from our communities. And Round Valley, each year, this is the fourth year that they've done this, the first year, we asked people to bring in pictures from the parades that happened in the different communities. The second year is slipping my mind. The third year, we partnered with the Forest Service.
Forest Service.
And put together some of the history of the Forest Service. This year, we had a Spanish Heritage Evening last night, and have interviews and so forth with members of the Round Valley community of Spanish heritage, of Hispanic heritage, and those will be available on our website. It'll take a little bit of time to get those put up, but they're being transcribed and so forth. Vic Valencia from here in St. John's was up there and sang, and we had a speaker from the Arizona Humanity Society, Barbara Jaque, and she spoke, the title of her book is Where Have All the Sheep Gone? And so she spoke about the different, well, just the state of sheep herding here in Arizona, and mentioned that at one point, we had 1.1 million sheep in Arizona, and now we're down to about 100,000, and most of them are up on the Navajo Nation, actually. So just very interesting evening, well-attended, lots of fun, and so Round Valley, our staff there is amazing, and they just continually put together great programs, and we're appreciative of all that they do, and appreciative of the Round Valley community that supports them so well.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I did attend, and it was excellent, and it was a full house, and someone got a special song sung to them for their birthday, hint, hint. So with that, do I have a motion to close the Library District?
Motion.
Second, all those in favor? All right, so moved. Okay, the next item is the Apache County Jail District, item number one. Thank you.
Good morning.
Discussion of possible approval for a price increase for Trinity Food Service. This increase is being requested to offset the increase in the minimum wage. You have already really approved the numbers on this last month. This is strictly a signature on the addendum, so there's no price increase from last month. That's all part and parcel to this. Trinity owns Swanson, so last month we did Swanson, this month we're doing Trinity, but there's no additional money required. It's just a signature needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
If there's a motion needed, go ahead and make a motion.
All right, thank you. I'll second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the price increase at Trinity Food Service due to minimum wage increases. There's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Serval. Do I have a motion to close the Apache County Jail District?
So moved.
That's second. Okay. So we'll open into the regular meeting now. So the first item on the agenda is Apache Sitgrees National Forest, Springerville Ranger Richard Madril, Fire and Fuels Rob Lieber, the presentation on the fire season outlook. So you guys come on up, I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you for having us here. Give our annual report.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for having us here. I'm Rob Lieber, please, some folks don't know me, I'm a fire management officer for the Springerville Ranger District. So when we talk about fire season outlook, when we're making predictions about fire season, we're looking at a bunch of different factors that aid in our prediction. It's normally precipitation totals for the year, and when that precip came, availability of fuel, which is generally how dry our fuels are, making them available to burn, or how much grass we have, and how green that is, long-term drought, and really predicted weather into the summer months. So that's, we get these predictions normally from paying attention to our fuel, weighing our fuels in the forest, taking samples, our remote automated weather stations, and from the National Weather Service, and the Forest Service has a predictive services group that does this for Region Three, which is Arizona and New Mexico. So on to kind of how we look. Right now, we had pretty decent precipitation last monsoon. I would consider it okay precipitation for the winter, and actually, some very much-needed spring precipitation that's come a little late and added some moisture to us, which is gonna help us out for fire season. We're experiencing a bit of a green-up right now, which in some of the past seasons that we've had, last year, the year before, we barely even greened up coming out of winter, which that makes the fire danger quite a bit higher, and as a result, we've had some long-term drought. With this precipitation, some of the long-term drought factors have backed off, so technically, we're looking a little better right now than we have the past couple of years. Our dead woody fuels are at average or a little below average, and that really depends on where they are on our Ranger District, or a couple Ranger Districts on the Apache Sitgrees, so it's a little bit spotty and kind of hard to predict that. But one thing we do have in abundance is quite a bit of grass growth from last monsoons, a lot of warm season growing happened, and that can be good and bad. If that grass is green, which we've kind of experienced a bit of a green-up in the spring, that's a good thing, but it's actually more available fuel, and can add to faster-moving fires, frankly. Predicted weather patterns, our predicted weather is for us to be a little bit warmer than normal, but also, there's a possibility that we could end up having some April rain showers, and that's based off a lot of programs and stuff that I don't necessarily understand, but that's, I take them at their word, that there's a possibility that we'll be a little wetter in April than normal. So that, all that kind of combines to make us look like we have basically an average fire season is what we're predicting, and I would caveat that by saying an average fire season in the White Mountains, the Apache County portion of the White Mountains, average fire season means we can still have fires. This place is fire-prone. The Muggio and Rim in Apache County, I looked it up, gets more lightning than almost anywhere but Florida, so we have a lot of ignition sources. The good thing about that is with lightning ignition, most of the time that comes with the advent of monsoons, which is a little bit higher humidity and possible precip. Now, the big, I think the big kicker for Apache County, for, there's portions of the Lakeside District, the Springerville District, and about half the Alpine District are in Apache County, is the wind. It's very hard to predict when we're gonna get it, we know we normally get it. The big problem we have is human-caused starts. So human-caused starts early in the spring or late in the spring, before we see monsoon moisture, are generally the most damaging fires we have, and also hard to predict because they come with the wind, where lightning-caused starts normally happen with the precipitation, and we generally don't have as much wind when we're having monsoons. So right now, we have, we're looking at a fairly average season, and I'll open it for any questions, if there are any.
Well, I did want to point out that Rob and Richard, both being in the Springerville District there, where I'm at in the Round Valley, have been instrumental in helping Malena, and now Bruce through so many of their projects. Bruce Greco has taken over my former contract. He will lend many assets that I didn't have to the job, and I want to thank you folks for helping Malena so much on those thinning projects. So I appreciate your time, and I know that you folks have staff meetings and stuff, so if you have to go, that's totally fine. All right, thank you.
Number two, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Vice Chairman and Supervisor Alden Shepard, number two is a presentation by President Gene Swarthow from NPC. We enjoy a good relationship with NPC, we worked together many years in our partnership, and we appreciate Gene being here today.
Many years.
Many years.
Many years.
Thank you.
Though I find it interesting that I'm here today for the first time since I've been president, but I'm about to leave the college, so, you know, I'm a pass-through right now, I should might say. I did want to, I looked at the term update, and I thought maybe some basic background is as helpful as an update right now, and I thought I'd start out by kind of giving you a frame of reference for where the college itself as a whole is right now, and then our relationship with Apache County. The college has come through some difficult years and done extremely well, but it has some difficult years ahead, I might add. We are in a presidential search mode. By June 2018, the District Governing Board of the college will name a new president, and so that's a formidable task right now for that board to take on. It also makes the college a little nervous, since I've been president for about 10 years. Nobody likes change, but they'll get used to it. Couple of other challenges we face coming up, one is the loss of property tax revenue as the Choya Power Plant moves toward closure. Arizona Tax Research Associates has given us a projection of a loss of property tax of approximately $1.6 million of revenue to the college budget. So we are looking and planning, particularly through this summer, looking at all services, all programs, all positions, and we anticipate doing some major realignments at the college to compensate for that property tax loss. How that will affect Apache County, really can't say yet, because I'm not sure how it affects the college itself yet. That's a work in progress right now. It does affect in something we already deal with here in Apache County and Navajo County for the college, and that is keeping up with the compensation and recruitment needs, particularly for faculty teaching. We still sit around the mid-range of compensation for faculty, but we're finding it harder and harder to compete in that area, also in the instructional technology area as well. So those are challenges we face, and again, we really are going to be looking at the alignment of delivery, processes, programs, everything to figure out how we maximize our services to students, but still absorb a significant revenue loss. And to make that even more of a challenge right now, the college, and this includes Apache County, is coming up on our accreditation cycle. 2019, we are scheduled for our accreditation 10-year wrap-up, and that does present some challenges also as we move forward. One of the challenges that has come up with accreditation is the Higher Learning Commission, who accredits us, has not revamped, but has renewed its commitment to faculty qualifications. Now, as at college, we've always held that standard, and in our audit of faculty, we only, and that includes dual enrollment, adjuncts, full-time, we only found one who doesn't meet those credentials, but as we look at hiring in the future, that will have to be a significant point of research on any particular item. The other thing I'd kind of like to outline, because it really does affect Apache County, the college went through a short reorganization period, and it resulted from the fact that we had a vice president who decided to retire, and when he retired, we realized that we had created probably three jobs for him instead of one, and we had significant difficulty replacing him until we broke the position into pieces. So in doing so, we created a CBO position and a Chief Operating Officer position. In that Chief Operating Officer's position, we have moved the direct report of the Apache County Coordinator to that Chief Operating Officer rather than directly to the president. And you may ask why we did that. Quite frankly, because I did not have the time to sufficiently address the needs of Apache County, and I really wanted it to be a more focused direct report, and this person, the COO, has partnerships in his job description. So I feel like Apache County will get more direct touches, more direct conversation, more direct help in all kinds of decision-making processes, so you're aware that I did make that change. I hope it will be positive, I'm pretty sure it will, because dying from neglect is never a good thing. So as I move to Apache County specifically in its relationship with Northland Pioneer College, you know, there are a couple of things that drive our partnership. It's been a very good partnership. I think it's been good for Apache County. It doesn't directly provide much assistance to Navajo County, but the arrangement is a really, it's the right place and the right space to be working together. Some of the challenges that face Apache County in relationship to education through NPC, one is the needs for Apache County students often outweigh the availability of funds. And Apache County students and Apache County higher ed would like to have a lot more for students than they can afford right now. So that's always a tension, push-pull for them. What can we do versus what if we got to support what we can do? So that's something that I always, I'm sensitive to. Apache County works really hard to use its funds that are available for education for students efficiently, but that's often hard to do in a small student environment. I think the other thing we'll be looking at with Apache County in the future, it's not been an issue up until now, is coming up with new program thoughts or ideas that match the needs of the community really well. As the power plants begin to pull back, do we need as many welders? Or do we need some other programs that match the community needs more effectively? That's something we'll be working on, I think, over the next year to two years to figure that out. Another challenge that is significant for all of us, but you can see it in Apache County as well, less so in Navajo County, declining student enrollments. This is typical across the country right now for community colleges. There are a lot of drivers that we can identify that are contributing to decreasing enrollment in community colleges, but in rural areas with limited funding, those decreases can feel pretty significant. So we need to look and work together on how we address declining enrollments. Navajo County is pretty stable, it's not astounding, it's not high-growth for students, but it's kind of stabilized, so we need to look at Apache County and see where we can work together to bring that enrollment up, primarily by making sure that we're addressing all the student needs that we possibly can, and doing it effectively. One of the real positives right now for Apache County in its relationship with NPC is what we call the Talon Project. The Talon Project is a grant-funded, it's a Title Four, Title Three, excuse me, not Title Four, Title Three Native-serving, non-tribal grant from the federal government. It's a five-year grant, and what the Talon Project does, is designed to do, is bring really high-quality, very effective, interactive, distance-learning to high schools that are struggling to deliver dual enrollment to their students, i.e. in the current environment for K-12, they can't afford to hire master-prepared teachers to do their dual enrollment for them. They could a little bit in the past, as funding decreases for K-12, this has become a real problem. So what we're doing instead is we are using our faculty, all masters-prepared, approved by the universities, the Higher Learning Commission, to deliver through this really nifty technology, dual enrollment to high schools who need it. And right now, our major participation is from the usual crowd. Snowflake and Sholo School got in really fast. We can take 10 our first year, and this is our first year, but we're actively recruiting K-12 high schools that are on the Navajo Nation, Hopi, White Mountain, Apache, because that's where the need is the greatest. And right now, I believe we have three or four of the first 10 are high school districts located on the Navajo Nation, and it's been so successful, superintendents love it, students love it, that now those who didn't claim to get in the first 10 are scrambling to get in. We'll take, by grant requirements, we take two a year for the next three years, so we can take six more. And so we're really focusing on adding to the Talon Project from the native communities that surround us, they need it the most. That will also, and what we're seeing with the Talon Project, is it's offsetting declining enrollments, because the excitement and the passion for doing it has come in from the high schools, and it augments our regular enrollment in programs. But we have some challenges working together. As everybody else knows, tight funds always make these challenges bigger, but we have the relationship, and the working relationship, I believe, with Apache County to solve almost anything that comes at us. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Supervisor, be happy.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Gene. I guess some of the, I guess, questions that I have is that the recent change, now that our coordinator, Apache coordinators, under the Chief Operation Officer, I guess more for, from the county side, I guess, looking forward to the future. Some of the questions I wrote down were answered on the enrollment issue and part of it, how do we increase that? Where does Apache County stand as to, I guess, where our service areas are for Northland Pioneer? Certainly, I think the numbers are there, we just need to do as much more advocacy in reaching out to the high school students that are getting ready to graduate. And certainly, I think the other is glad to hear about Talon. I think that's another area that I think we come to find out, is that, you know, back in the '60s and '70s, you know, the commerce, we built the interstates, but for commerce these days, it's all about the internet. Likewise, with a lot of the other economic developments that's happening around, you know, Walmart, instead of going to the grocery stores, we're actually ordering online and getting it delivered to the home. I think education is following that suit as well, you know, if it hasn't already. Certainly, I think it's more feasible, and I don't know if we're turning into or addressing some of those areas, so I think distance learning could be a possibility, especially now that there's internet almost connected into every home. And so I do applaud all of the transitions that we're doing, and thank you for the highlights. I think those are very, very well brought forth, and I think one of the more interesting that really grabbed my attention was the property taxes that we're gonna be losing, you know, 1.6. Certainly, I'd like to see, you know, how we're gonna adjust to that, what are some of the changes. I know that we're, we don't want to become too lean and forget about, you know, addressing a lot of our kids that are there going to school, and our students that are going to school. And so I'm looking, hopefully, that we would find a good president, and just search for filling the position, so certainly, I think, you know, whoever we can work with on the county side of it, and, you know, because I think that comes down to the property tax and what it does, how it's impacting our loss possibly to the college, and also for the services that we could be getting our education in. And so those are the only questions I had, and the district learning and student enrollment, and then the Higher Learning Commission, I guess, is something I just wrote down for my own, and hopefully, we can try to obtain, because we're down, we're down in Phoenix quite often, talking with the governor, and the governor's really putting more and more infrastructure costs to the universities, but I'm hoping that somewhere along the way, we can find some bill or some dollars tied to small junior colleges, and, you know, I think the community colleges, I think that would really, really work too as well, so I do thank you for coming here and providing an update. Certainly, I think we kind of need to stay on top of what we need to do and how we need to work with the enrollments, because I guess for the enrollment part, we can get a lot of our younger kids that are coming out of high school, and even like myself, you know, to, you know, get back to school distant learning-wise, you know, because we don't have the time as a traditional student going 12 credits and carrying up that, so thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
Quick comment. What we have discovered just now, because we're enrolling right now for fall, is students who have had the Talon Project at high schools are more inclined to stay and locally register for fall classes at the college, so there's that continuity piece that I think we really need to pay attention to as well.
Okay.
But thank you for your time today.
Yeah.
I hope I'll be back next year. I hope I'll be back next year, and someone else can replace me after that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Vice Chairman and Supervisor Shepard number three is a presentation by Chris Sexton, our Health Department Director, and Melena Bezurto, our Grants Coordinator. This is on the progress of the demolition at the Cabin Cove cabins in South Fork. And I know we have a PowerPoint here where you can see the before and after picture. So with that, just turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Hello.
To give you a little bit of background on this project, this was, South Fork in general was the first hazardous fuels mitigation project I worked on. That was in about 2009. It's when I started working with Supervisor Shamley, so it's been a while. The particular area we're talking about is the cabins at the Cove and South Fork. Just to the south of these cabins is the forest campground. This is right on that forest boundary. Of all the property owners that we worked with, the question that kept coming up was, what are you going to do about the cabins? Because you can kind of see the state of disrepair they've been in. This is a picture of the inside of the, of one of them. So it looked like a, a spot where kids were going to have paintball wars amongst probably other things. And it was just a huge eyesore and a fire hazard when we were working in this area. So we partnered with State Forestry and Eager Fire, Greer Fire, Springerville Fire, and we did a, a training program in there to eliminate some of the fuels that were on the ground and try to increase some of the safety. So this was the first piece of that. And then we started working with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and the Health District, looking at the dilapidated buildings ordinance inside of the Health, Health District and what we could do to mitigate the cabins. Through AZDQ, we got a brownfields grant. The brownfields grant was to do an asbestos survey on the cabins. If that came out clean, we could do another training, have the fire department take everything out. Unfortunately, they found some asbestos in the buildings, and that had to be mitigated properly. So this is some more pictures of the initial site cleanup. Things that we were looking at cleaning up initially, just on the ground. And so that, that reduced some of the problem. And then I'll let Chris talk about where we went after the asbestos survey came back.
Thank you, Melena. After the asbestos survey came back showing asbestos and materials in the cabins and transite pipe used for the wood burning stoves, we contracted with a company to remove the asbestos and a company to oversee the asbestos removal as required by law. That was done last summer. So all the asbestos had been removed from the cabins. So we were ready to proceed with the next step of the project, and that was demolition and removal of the debris from the site which is taking place right now. We have worked with the property owner to try to get him to clean up the property. He was resistant to our attempts. We've gone through all the steps that have led us to this part of the project. We've contacted the state on historic districts. There weren't any historical buildings in the site that needed to be preserved. The, the total acreage is 77 acres. This is just a five-acre parcel where the cabins were located. We tried to get a grant to remove the cabins, Brownsfield Grant. The owner was not willing to work with us on that. So the county, to this point, Health District has footed the bill with liens being placed on the property for the amount and cost of the work that has been done.
So this, these pictures are from last week with the help of the Engineers Office and the Health District and Supervisor Shamley to get these cabins cleaned up. So lots of, lots of holloway. But a real positive impact for that community as a whole. The biggest thing about South Fork that I can point out is we know how the wind blows in this area. And South Fork tends to just be a fuse. That wind comes from the southwest and just blows right up the canyon and will send any kind of fire into Eager and spread out toward Greer. There's one road in, one road out into South Fork. Those residents could potentially, that could cause them to get trapped in there. You know, if anything fell into those roads and things like that. So this has always been a project that we've been pushing on. It's been a long process, but we've got, we got the right people in the right places to finally get here. So we're just pleased to, to share this with the board and if you have any questions.
Supervisor Shepard, did you have any? Okay, thank you. I, I wanted to express my appreciation to the Health Department, Melena, and Farron and his road yards too, because this has been a long project. They've made sure that we've stayed legal the whole route, that we've engaged the owners properly. And we were able to host multiple training here for those local fire departments on SAW certifications. In fact, Melena earned her SAW certifications in South Fork. Yeah, so she's certified, Faller. We don't have a lot of those in the county, if she's one of them. So I just want to say that, I appreciate all the work. Thank you, folks. Okay, next item, County Manager Winger.
Yes, thank you. Number four is the consent agenda. We have items A, B, and C, and we'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Vice Chair. Consent items.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Is there any questions or discussion? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thank you. Here, the next item is Election Department. And I believe number five is being removed. Am I correct, Ms. Melo?
Yes, the Alpine School District has requested that their items be removed from the agenda. Therefore, I respectfully request that items number five, six, and seven be removed.
Mrs. Shepard? Okay. All right, well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, that was quick. I didn't realize it was so many getting removed. Thank you, ma'am. Number eight is Melena Bezurto, Grants Manager. This is a discussion of possible approval to accept or reject bid number, groundstands 138 to 17.
This is a bid that we put out under the Apache County CDBG project for the groundstands at the St. John's Fairgrounds. We got the bid, bid opening was last Monday, and we only received one bid. I went on the advice of the Attorney's Office and talked with the company, and they've discounted the structure 10% and additionally gave us, they gave us an additional $1,960 in discount above the 10%. The issue that we're running into is that we're in a bit of a time restraint. We want to have the groundstands up by the July rodeo. If not, this would be the second year that we're without new groundstands. So we're trying to avoid that, that's the main priority. Secondly, the bid that came back is higher than we originally estimated when we put this application together. So there's a spreadsheet in your packet, and it shows that accepting this bid as-is puts us about $11,479 over budget. There's two costs that go into a CDBG project. $5,000 goes to NACOG for technical assistance and an environmental review fee. On this one, it's $7,500. What I'm asking the board is if we can enter into a cost share between the county and the city for that roughly $12,500, that would, put that money back into our project and put us positive $1,000 on this project. So that's, that's my recommendation. I've, I've gone back through our original estimates, and with this bid, our plumbing estimate has gone up about $700. And concrete went from $112 a yard when we originally did the application to $121 a yard. And so I factored in those new costs on that cost analysis sheet that you have. And so that's my recommendation at this time is to accept the bid as-is with the cost share between the county and the city.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bezurto. Supervisor Shepard, you know, what are your wishes?
Just quickly, on the cost share, Mr. Winger, do we have an explanation on how that will be handled?
It's my understanding it would be split between the city and the county equally. So our share would be roughly $6,000, is what you're saying. Supervisor Shepard, we would be able to handle that. We have contingency set aside for situations like this. So we would take that out of contingency to, to provide our part.
Got a motion to accept.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. We have a motion, a second. I have a couple of questions. Does, um, does, does St. John's have anything to present? Are they present as St. John's? If not, I just wondered because...
The only person that's present would be Ryan Patterson, if he's willing to speak.
Did you have anything, Mr. Patterson? I didn't.
I apologize, Vice Chairman. Supervisor, I'll switch a hat here for a second. As the mayor of St. John's, we're just very grateful for the, the opportunity we have to work in conjunction with the county. We know that the sacrifice and the efforts that you make each day on our behalf, and so we're grateful for that. And we're absolutely in alignment with going ahead and sharing that cost sharing.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No, no, not exactly, I just, since you were here. Thank you.
If I can just piggyback on that response. The groundstands, this is not for a contractor to come and set them up. This is just for the materials. The county and the city will also be sharing that labor as an in-kind expense to this project. We've done that in the past. It's worked really well. So, you know, we, we're not short any manpower to, to put this project together, is just what I wanted to add. So that would also, additionally to the, to the cost share would be the labor.
Okay.
Which we've already discussed.
And Ms. Bezurto, or Delwyn, whomever needs to chime in. But I know this has been a long, very large project. And I am glad that we can potentially not have to rant and make those arrangements by beating those deadlines, because that's just extra cost for somebody on those bleachers. So if, when we engage other communities, we're going to be able to, I believe, offer many of the same services, right, as a county, matching and whatnot?
Supervisor Shamley, yes, we do this on a regular basis with the other communities. We've used our Flood Control District to help the town of Eager on several occasions. We work with the town of Springerville, doing chip sales, different kinds of things. So we're actively involved in all the communities, and we provide assistance wherever we can.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, with that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, so moved. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Winger?
Yes, Supervisor Shamley, Supervisor Shepard. Number nine is a discussion of possible approval of the distribution of funds for the Secure Rural Schools. We would like to remove this item from the agenda, but we'd like to discuss it a little bit, just because a few changes have occurred in the last couple of days. And I believe Supervisor Shamley, you had some items you wanted to bring out on this?
Yes, thank you. The reason I'd like to discuss it real quickly is Secure Rural Schools is one of those very cumbersome programs that people hear about. So typically, in Arizona, if we go on last year's numbers, for instance, I work with the Secure Rural Schools Act Chief in Washington, D.C. Every year, and I, in my former job, I wrote papers to help the committees in the state legislature and all, all 15 counties. So last year, the state of Arizona, for instance, to divide up amongst counties that have forested assets within their boundaries, would have got about 11 million. This year, the state's getting 1.5. That is a significant drop, as you can see. 85% of that typically went to the school districts, 15 to road projects. And, and it was done that way because the theory, and it's a workable theory, was that work like Farron and his road yards do gets people, adults and children, to school safely. It has not been reauthorized by Congress. This is the second time in five years this has occurred. The last time, we were bailed out by a shirt-tail rider, if you will, on a defense bill. Without this being reauthorized, we went back to the Antiquities Act that the way it was written in 1908 made sense. And it was a seven-year rolling average of forest receipts. But we don't do near as much production on the forest today. So it's a seven-year rolling average of a little bit is even less. And as a result, Apache County, the state is only receiving the 1.5. Apache County's portion is 32,000. We should have been getting around 900,000. This information mainly came in last night, and then there was one court case that challenged it, the way the distribution's done in Washington. And then Washington, D.C., the, the Office of General Counsel for the Department of Agriculture contacted me on the drive-in today. And there is one more piece that the county, they've realized, and nobody's dealt with the Antiquities Act that's living today in these offices, this type of dispersment. They realize today that we need to contact the state as well about the dispersment, what percentages go to the schools and roads. A quarry is acceptable for roads, but we need to figure out how we're going to do the dispersment and contact the state. All this, the, the general updates for the good of the public. This is not a county wish to make $800,000 disappear from the schools in our case, or 11 million from the state. But we have to do a distribution, and with in light of these new updates from Washington, D.C. that literally were on my drive-in this morning, it was best to remove it till we can clarify, so we stay legal. So that's kind of, that's all I had. Mr. Shepard, did you have any questions or? I, I also got some packets sent to me, if, if anybody wants them, PDFs, that I can distribute on this whole conundrum, they're like 20 pages.
Just a quick question. I did, I thought I saw our treasurer here, Ms. Marlena, is she here?
Yes.
Oh, I noticed there was a notice to you. You want to, do you have anything to provide on this? No? Okay.
Thank you. That was it, so the public knew where we were headed. Thank you. Close all these windows. And Mr. Manager, next item?
Yes, number 10 is discussion of possible approval of a lease agreement between Apache County and Sun State Towers LLC. This is for a cell tower located in Vernon. We do have the representative here, and this agreement has gone through the county attorney's office, and they have approved it, and we would recommend approval.
With that, Supervisor Shepard, what's your wishes?
So moved.
Okay. Make a second. I'd like to ask, since you came, would you like to present any details, sir? Please state just your name and...
My name is Eric Hurley, I'm with Pinnacle Consulting or Sun State Towers. So we have a lease... So, we have a lease, um, I believe the term was... Excuse me for a minute. So, the term is, um, an initial five-year term, um, with, or excuse me, an initial 10-year term, um, with five renewal terms, I believe is what it is, or 10 renewal terms? I'm sorry. Um, so it, it's a thousand dollars a month. Um, the site will be located, um, at the Apache County, you guys have a refuse center and roads lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it'll actually be located there. Um, it's a 195-foot tower. Um, Verizon will be the first carrier on the tower, but it is designed, uh, to support additional carriers. Um, so in the future, you know, if, you know, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Sprint wants to, uh, build, they can co-locate on the tower itself. Um, and, uh, there is an option period, so it is a thousand-dollar option for 12 months with, uh, one renewal, um, for a 12-month option, so 24 months. Um, Verizon's actually pretty eager to get this site built, so, um, if you guys approve it, it'll probably be built a lot faster than that 24 months, so...
Okay. I appreciate it, sir. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what does that thousand-dollar monthly rate entail? Is it just for, for, for the site location or does that include, sir, the services, uh, any taxes and stuff like that?
No, so that's just for the rental space that we'll be taking. Um, you guys don't have to pay any services, any, uh, electricity, anything like that will be paid for by Sun State.
Okay. Um, the other question is that, do we have, was this a negotiated rate, I guess, um, county attorney or who?
I can answer that.
Or Mr. Winger? Um, based on that, do we have any set, set standards as far as, uh, the acreage or square footage wise? Well, how do we come up with just a thousand?
Supervisor, the way, I suggested a thousand based on the previous tower that the board approved, uh, near Lyman Lake, and it's just for the footprint of the tower. Um, so, yeah, we, uh, it was me that suggested a thousand based on what we've done in the past and it's just for the footprint of the tower. As far as how big that is, maybe, how big's the footprint?
Uh, well, it really just depends. So, this is a self-support tower, so the footprint of the tower is gonna be about 20 by 20. The lease area itself is 50 by 50, um, and that is so it can accommodate the additional carriers, um, as they locate on the tower.
Okay. Any further questions, sir? Okay. Questions? Okay. Uh, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thank you, sir. Uh, number 11, County Manager?
Yes, number 11 is discussion of possible approval of the liquor license application recommendation for William Jackson and Tricia Haley. This is for the Jiffy Store Highway, Jiffy on Highway 61 in Concho. This is, I believe, is because of a change in ownership. We have not received any dissenting letters on this particular item and we'd recommend approval.
Gee. With that, Mr. Shepard, what's your wishes? Okay, a second. Um, is there any questions or discussions?
Just, just hearing that it's a transfer of lease, I noticed that we have a lease license number attached. Um, I guess that's also based upon approval here and that the issuance will be given? Is that my understanding?
No. Go ahead, sorry. Go ahead.
Supervisor, it's my understanding this goes on to the next level, which would be the State Liquor License Board.
Okay.
I believe they purchased the store a couple, three months ago. I had seen an opening announcement, so... Okay.
Good.
Well, thank you. Okay, well, if there's, uh, no further questions, um, we have a motion to approve. Second, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Uh, item number 12, this is the call to the public. Um, I don't have any slips. Do you have any?
Sure.
Okay, is there any items then?
Just, uh...
Okay.
Vice Chair, just, just a quick recognition, if you indulge me, that we have one of our members of the 23rd Navajo Nation Council that represents Nahat'Adzeal, uh, the lower portion of, closer to the, the Navajo Nation, Honorable Raymond Smith. He's also the vice chair of our Law and Order Committee on the Navajo Nation Council, so welcome him, Mr. Smith, sir.
Mr. Smith, thank you for attending. Did you have something you'd like to speak to or?
Good morning, Supervisors and staff, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I just came down to speak on behalf of the Nahat'Adzeal and, uh, District Three and District Two. I represent both of them. I'm glad both supervisors are here. Uh, my name is Raymond Smith Jr. and, uh, I represent the Navajo Nation Council. And with me is, uh, the President from Leupton Chapter, Yvonne Murphy, who's sitting over here, and also, uh, our Vice President from Hought Chapter, James Watchman Jr. So, I'd like to say that, uh, after this meeting, I'd like to, uh, have a one-on-one session. I know we can't meet together, but I'd like to meet separate because it'll be a quorum if I do ask for the both of you. In respect of that, sir, it's just some, uh, matters that we have up north that, uh, I'd like to address on one-on-one basis, so... Thank you for allowing me to speak and you guys have a good day and enjoyed the meeting and it was quick and brief and I just wanna say, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Murphy, as well as President of the Leupton Chapters, come down to the Round Valley as well and met with me and I've appreciated her help, uh, there, her and Mr. Black Goat, both, so... Okay, uh, with that, since there was no slips, uh, then our meeting is, our agenda is finished, I should say. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Motion.
Second. So, so moved.